Thank you, Josh. All right. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 10:32. Welcome to everybody. A special welcome to Alexis Baker, who is joining us as the interim planning and zoning administrator. Thank you so much for doing that. We really appreciate your service, and I think we've been keeping you pretty busy. Let's move on to a moment of silence. All right. Moving on to adoption of agenda. Are there any changes that are going to be recommended for this agenda? All right. May I have a motion to adopt the meeting agenda as presented?
Motion.
Motion from Eleanor. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And let's vote. Ayes in favor? Aye. Any nays? Thank you. Moving on to adoption of the meeting minutes, July 17, 2025. Are there any changes to the meeting minutes? Angie, I've got two small ones. On packet, page three, bottom paragraph, slight preference to put the word town in front of attorney, Brandon Freeman, town attorney, to be more specific about his role. Packet, page four, first full paragraph, there's a reference to problems between the college and their insurance company. I think it would be more appropriate to reference that as issues under discussion between the college and their insurance company.
Okay.
Thank you. Any additional changes to the meeting minutes? May I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes as amended?
Motion.
Motion from Eleanor. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Second. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, the ayes carry up. Okay. Is there any old business? All right. Moving into new business. I did want to note that we have Commissioner Hewitt with us. I just wanted to say thank you for joining us. I understand you won't be participating in the vote, but I'm glad to see you. All right. Conditional zoning request in public hearing. So as we think about moving into this section, I will ask our town attorney to refresh us on the conditional zoning requirements. Also want to ensure that everyone understands we've received a lot of material. The commission has been diligent and has had the opportunity to review that. Knowing that, we would expect there to be public hearing and comment and discussion, but given the amount of material and the time that we've had, we will limit the public hearing part of it to three minutes per speaker. So just please be aware of that and think about that as you prepare for your comments. We absolutely want to hear from the community. We also need to make sure that we're able to get through the public hearing and to the board discussion. All right. Brandon, if you could refresh us on the conditional zoning requirements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My pleasure. So Alexis is going to tell you a little bit more about this in her slide presentation, but just very generally, conditional zoning is a legislative process. So this is not like a quasi judicial process that you would have in front of a Board of Adjustment. This is a legislative process where an applicant can ask for a change to the zoning of a parcel of property, and it's a change of the town's zoning amendment specific to that property. And the town actually enacts an ordinance specific to that property that will remain on that property or apply to that property until the ordinance is changed. The role of this board in that process is to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners as to whether this board believes that the ordinance should be adopted, that the conditional zoning should be approved. This board will also have the ability to make recommendations to the conditional ordinance. If that comes up, we will talk about it and those requirements at a later time. For now, I think the job of this board is to listen to the presentation of the applicant and be attentive. The applicant will explain why the applicant believes that a conditional zoning is warranted in this place, and this board can consider and make a recommendation. I'll be here to answer questions to the best of my ability as they arise, so please ask if you have any concerns.
Thank you, Brandon. Do the members of the commission have any questions for Brandon on what he's just gone over?
Yeah, I do. The order that was entered by the, I'm assuming it's a court of general jurisdiction, has jurisdiction over this matter, right?
So there is a pending case that's related to this property and the applicant. It is before the North Carolina Court of Appeals. I do not believe that it has any impact on today's proceedings. I think that this board can evaluate whether they believe that this conditional zoning is warranted without regard to the legal status of that action.
But the court ordered the Board of Adjustment to reconsider this. It didn't order this committee to do anything.
So that would have been a quasi judicial process? This is a wholly unrelated process. You have legislative processes and judicial processes. This is a legislative process.
Tell me that again?
So today's-
I can hear you.
Today's hearing is a legislative hearing, and it is my legal opinion that this board can consider and make a recommendation without running afoul of that order.
Of the order that's already been entered?
Okay.
Keep in mind that today's recommendation is a recommendation. And if you feel that, if it impacts your decision, this is a legislative hearing. So you can vote however you feel, but I do think that this board can hear this matter and make a recommendation.
Are you prepared to advise us of what impact the pending appeal will have upon whatever decision we make?
I am not.
Is it going to have any impact? I mean, what I'm concerned about is, we've got an appeal going on over here, and now we're being asked to come in from a different direction to address the exact same issue. And how do we know we're not going to end up just running afoul of whatever the appellate court does? And that doesn't seem to me to be in the best interest of the city in terms of efficiency.
I believe, yeah, as we think about what this commission has asked to do, it is within that narrow silo of considering the conditional zoning application. I think we all recognize that there are other activities going on outside of that, but I believe Brandon's advising us that we should consider it from the conditional zoning standpoint and not from the perspective of those other activities.
I think that's right. And I just want to add that when someone submits an application, I believe it is up to the town to run that application through the process and consider it. And that's all this board is here to do today. There are legal complex issues that I am not in a position to opine on today, and I'm not sure that there are solid answers to those, and I'm sorry about that. I just don't know if there's, I don't know the answer, and I'm not sure if the answer is knowable. It may be by a more competent lawyer, but I don't know it. So the board has before it an application that is complete and is ready to be evaluated, and I think the board can evaluate the application.
And so you're suggesting that the board today conducts itself without regard whatsoever to the other proceedings, without concerning itself with whether or not it's in the town's best interest to have two legal issues cooking, when we do have the right to say we don't want to do this. We don't want to exercise this jurisdiction.
I think the board can, when you cast your vote, you can use whatever, so long as your decision is not based on something that it would be illegal to base your decision on. We are in a legislative hearing, so it can't be based on race, gender, religion, any sort of protected class. The board can, you can vote according to what you think is best for the town.
Okay.
So long as you are not making, casting your vote based on one of those protected things.
Right.
That's right. Again, is there a complex relationship out there? Yes, I am not prepared to explain it today.
Thank you both. Okay. Any more questions for Brandon? All right. Alexa, Alexa, shall we move on?
Sure. Can you hear me? Is the microphone on? No? Yes, he said yes. Need to move it a little closer.
You might need a little closer.
Okay. If we could open up the slideshow for the conditional zoning for 779 Foreman Siding Road, please. Perfect. Thank you so much. I did want to make a couple notes before I go into this presentation, one of which is I did receive two additional comments.
Excuse me. Can you move that so we can see the screen? Did you put that up? Thank you.
There's two additional comments that you may have not received prior to this meeting. One is from 14 Pimlico Road, which is the Dunkins. It's a short one. And then there's a second one that we received today that is from the Nevils, and it's a handwritten note. So those are the two. So I think we had, one, two, three, four, five, six comments that did not make it into the staff report, and we have them available if anyone wants copies of those. But those will be in the next report that will go to the town council, so it'll be in the final packet. The other note I wanted to make too that was missing from the staff report is that we did advertise this in the newspaper according to General Statute 160D, and we will have to advertise this again for the town council meeting as well. All right. Next slide, please. So this is a conditional zoning request, and it was brought to us by property owners Wade and Suzy Burns, and they submitted this request for 779 Foreman Siding Road, pin Hopefully I got all those years in. From R3 to R3 CZ to accommodate a single-family residential structure. Next slide, please. The subject property is currently zoned R3 and is within Montreat's extraterritorial jurisdiction. All right. Next slide, please. And this is the plan that was submitted by the applicant. It's similar to what you have on page 15, but Mr. Burns did give me an updated plan that shows the setbacks, so you all should have that, and of course, there's copies up there as well. And I believe he also will be showing that after I'm done with this presentation. So the lot area is .26 acres. It's R3 low-density residential, the minimum lot size for R3 low-density residential is 20,000 square feet. .26 acres is 11,326 square feet, but since it is a lot of record, it is legally allowed to be developed at its current size. There's an existing, it is an existing lot, and it does have a single-family residence on the lot. The lot width is 75.09 feet from the front, 75.61 from the rear, so the average lot width is 75.35. And the low-density, R3 low-density residential allows a minimum lot width of 75 feet, so it does meet that. And again, the lot depth is an average of 150.12, and for R3, R3 low-density residential, the lot depth is 100 feet, so it meets that as well. The setbacks, and I do want to note, it is a double-front lot. It requires a front setback of 30 feet. The applicant's site plan calls for a 19-foot setback to the north on Foreman Siding Road. The applicant's site plan appears to call for an 82-foot setback to the south on Gilcrest Court. And again, the required setbacks, the required setbacks, I'm sorry, the required side setbacks is 15 feet. The applicant's plan calls for a 13-foot side setback to the east side. So you can kind of see that up there. Next slide, please. And this is just a rundown of the uses and any kind of requirements. So the Montreat zoning ordinance table of permitted uses does allow a single-family dwelling by right in R3. The hillside development and floodplain ordinance are not applicable to the site. Soil and erosion control are also not applicable, and the applicant did submit a stormwater management plan previously to another zoning administrator, and that was approved. Also, utilities are existing on-site because there is an existing residence. Next slide, please. And this is just kind of a rundown of some rules for the conditions. So per Section 510.55 of the MZO, if an applicant, application for conditional zoning is approved, thereafter, the development and use of the property shall be governed by the standards, restrictions, and regulations provided for in the corresponding zoning district, together with such changes, standards, and conditions imposed by the Town Board of Commissioners. Second, per Section 160D-703 of the North Carolina General Statutes, specific conditions may be proposed by the petitioner or the local government or its agencies, but only those conditions approved by the local government and consented to by the petitioner in writing may be incorporated into the zoning regulations. I just wanted to let you all know that. And that concludes my short presentation. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Any questions for Alexis from the board? All right. Are there any public comments? We can move into that section of the public hearing. Brandon, do I need to take a vote for that? Okay, thank you. We'll move into the public hearing. Are there any public comments?
I'm assuming I will. We should have our case.
Microphone. Yes, you would need to, yes, as part of the public hearing.
Am I limited to three minutes to present our case today?
We were going to limit speakers to three minutes, yes. Did you want to, or does he, as applicant-
Madam Chair, as the applicant, I believe that the board can hear his entire, what he has to say without a three-minute limitation.
All right.
The board could probably put a limitation within reason if necessary.
That makes sense. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, maybe-
We should move to Wade's.
I believe that the applicant should probably give his presentation first.
Sorry. Apologies. Okay. Mr. Burns, we're ready for you.
Oh, okay. Good morning. Thank you all. First, maybe you guys from town.
We'll need you to, I'm sorry, Mr. Burns, yes, we'll need you to use the microphone.
Wade Burns, 779 Foreman Siding Road, ETJ of Montreat. First, just to check with the town attorney, in quasi judicial and in common sense perhaps in this proceeding, it's important to know if someone is an expert in the area in which they're testifying. And I have, in my submittals, provided the board with a resume of my 50-plus years as an architect specializing in town planning. And this particular project, quite frankly, should demonstrate whether or not I might be considered an expert in stormwater management based upon what we've done on a stormwater management case. So I would submit that I qualify as an expert witness in the area that I'm going to be speaking on, and the town attorney may have some opinion on that, but I just present that for whatever it's worth. We have our house we've lived in for two years, some months since August of '23. We designed it, permitted, received all permits, grading permit, erosion control plan I submitted. Everything was, excuse me, was approved. We, going to the slide you had.
Mr. Burns, why don't you, do you want to, right, take the mic over, bring the materials closer to the podium?
The original permit we received was based on a 15-foot setback, based upon the town's zoning ordinance, as it has always been ruled in recent years, was that it's a 30-foot front yard setback, unless the adjoining neighbors have less, then you can take the average of these. And so it's always been that the houses on either side of the applicant, whatever their front zoning setback was of what was built, that could be averaged out for the house that was going to be built in between, but it could not exceed 15 feet. And as our western neighbor's house is built 15 feet from the setback, this Hamilton's house 11 feet from the setback, we qualified for a 15-foot setback. I was on the Planning Zone Commission. We met twice a month, two hours of war, going through all of these things for four years. Somewhere in the point, I missed that two of the attorneys on the Planning Zone Commission said, well, instead of making it the neighbor's house, just make it the lots on both sides. Well, that meant this lot, which we owned, we didn't when we got a permit, but we later got it, this lot would have a 30-foot setback because there's nothing on it. Mr. Hamilton's has 11-foot setback. You add those two together, divide it by two, and that would create a 22-foot, 6-inch setback. And so while we had planned for a 15-foot, so we applied for a variance. The Board of Adjustment granted us a variance for that, based on, when you're doing a variance, it's based on are the hardships, not of the making of the property owner and so forth, and do they meet the purpose and intent of the ordinance? And so what we had is, you'll notice that the rear property line, which is also a front according, since it's two streets, our rear setback is 82 feet instead of 30, because Buncombe County septic dictates where the septic goes. And so that made our rear setback, instead of 30, made it 82 feet. And so that created an unusual hardship, unique to that lot and circumstance, that would qualify for reduction in the front yard setback. And based upon that, which are the principles upon which you approve a variance, they reduced our setback to 19 feet. And so we built accordingly. At the same time, we applied for a variance to just put the chimney into the 15-foot setback. And why would that be justifiable? Because our side yard setback on the east side had to be 34 feet to not interfere with existing stream bed. And so that pushed our lot area that we could use such that that justified, in the opinion of the Board of Adjustment, allowing for the two-foot chimney to be into the 15-foot setback. So the mass of buildings is all 15 feet. The roof overhang is allowed to be four feet, but our roof is only two feet, and then gutter on top of that. So the chimney even fits behind the gutter against the house. And so it was ruled that that was appropriate, and the Board of Adjustment made that approval, and the house was constructed accordingly. We received a cigarette occupancy and moved in. Now, third, is the issue of a 30-foot setback from a stream. North Carolina calls for a 30-foot vegetative buffer from perennial and intermittent streams across the state of North Carolina. Its purpose, I'm sorry, unlocks one acre or more across the state of North Carolina. Its purpose was primarily to protect quality waters because of all the agricultural use and insecticides that you're trying to keep from getting to those waters. When Montreat put a stormwater ordinance in, there was a panic here because we were giving out of water every year for many years, and would have to buy water from Black Mountain for the summer season and pay them back over the winter. And so Montreat was doing everything they could to slow down any development because we just didn't have the water to serve it. Subsequent to that, up above our house, they put in three very successful wells that relieved that pressure, and Montreat's not had that problem since. But so Montreat ignored the fact that for lots, less than an acre, and still made it a 30-foot setback for a perennial or intermittent stream. Nowhere in the state of North Carolina is there a 30-foot setback for any femoral stream. Nowhere in any of the documents is there any evidence that there's a 30-foot setback from an ephemeral stream. My opposition is one of the more famous and successful lawyers in this country, and so he crafted an argument that the Board of Adjustment, in approving a chimney or a front porch, has the right to put conditions on that approval. And therefore, it says they may impose conditions, but Mr. Hamilton argued they must impose a condition, and that condition must be a 30-foot setback. And my wording would be different than his, but that's what his argument was, and it continues to this day, that there should be a 30-foot setback from this ephemeral stream when 30-foot setbacks are only from perennial and intermediate. And he's even arguing, what he's recently sent you, that I could have easily and reasonably moved this house 30 feet over this way, and that I could do so now. It has a nine-foot, eight-inch tall, 40 feet long, 26 feet wide, concrete bank vault foundation upon which the entire house sits, and that's a full basement, that cannot be moved. It would be physically possible to move it. It costs probably millions of dollars, because you would have to figure some sort of a harness around the entire block, 40 feet by 26 by nine-foot, eight inches high, plus its concrete foundation. All of that would have to be harnessed, choked in, and with a series of cranes lifted into the air. the air, during the plumbing a little bit, and somehow moved over thirty feet. To say it was a reasonable accommodation is something sometimes that lawyers do when they don't have the facts and they don't have the law. They just make arguments and arguments. The house can't be moved. There are three issues before you. Is this house, as constructed, where there's an eighty-two-foot rear setback imposed, a thirty-four setback imposed by the conditions of the stream being there, and the fact that there's no other ephemeral stream in the state of North Carolina that's had to have a thirty-foot building setback, would be reasonable to allow those, the chimney and the front porch, to remain? Now, we need to deal with, because his argument is environmental harm and the stormwater. This is the same drawing, without the red arrows showing the setbacks. Whether it's ephemeral, intermittent, or perennial, perennial running all the time. As an architect, planner, a designer, it is imperative that I know all the facts, and the facts are, even though it's a dry stream bed, only when it rains, the facts are that if we were to have a hurricane, or if we were to have a two thousand and four series of two giant tropical storms, two weeks in a row, if we have that, water's coming down there. As an architect, I've got to take that into account. Anybody in this room can draw a house plan, and if they give a site plan and show setbacks, they can apply to the town of Montreat for a building permit, and that could be granted. But I can't, unless, because I am an architect, I have to put my seal, my state seal, on the drawings, and I have to sign it to apply, indicating the expertise that I have in this arena. And so here we have a dry stream bed that runs through here. And when a major storm is coming, I've got to know what can happen here, and I've got to design for that. I've got to engineer for that, and I did. And so, right here, there was a four-foot culvert existing when I bought the property. And right here was a three-foot culvert existing when I bought the property, both existing when we sold Mr. Hamilton his house that we used to own. Mr. Hamilton has sent you a piece that you maybe just got today, that he offered to settle this, and I refused to do a very reasonable thing of just connecting these two pipes and burying them. And then he would have settled it. He left out the other part that I would, what he told his lawyer, and his lawyer told the judge, was that I would also have to sign an agreement that whatever came through our land and landed on his, we'd be responsible for. Two things. The water that comes here, according to Mr. Hamilton's stormwater expert, comes from seventy acres upstream. That's three million square feet of land. And whatever comes off of three million square feet that crosses my property, I'm responsible for. That's like saying Mississippi is responsible for anything that came from the Ohio River on its way to the Gulf. That's preposterous. And then to connect the four-foot pipe to the three-foot pipe is bad science. I've got my seal on the drawings. I can't do something that's stupid engineering-wise. You have a three-inch pipe or four-inch pipe coming out of the bottom of your toilet. Can you imagine somebody shrinking it down to a two-inch pipe or an inch and a half pipe under the living room floor and then covering up a new floor? Obviously, that'd be so stupid, you can't do it. He put forth that condition for settling, knowing we couldn't accept it, legally or morally or engineering-wise, couldn't accept it. But he's still asking you and suggesting that we should connect two pipes. There's a fifty-six percent reduction in the amount of water from a four-foot pipe to a three-foot pipe. Further, he says, I put this in merely to accommodate myself and not him. So now let me tell you exactly what we did. Knowing that there could be something like Helene, which had never happened, but I did CO4. I was here then. So what I did is, because it's a quadraker lot, and I could build next to the stream, I used the house and located the house, not only was this the only place it could be from the setbacks, but I located the house as a storm wall and a barrier to protect the stream from deterioration. This section of open stream bed was a shallow wall. It was taking flow from two hundred degrees of the three hundred and sixty-degree circle, from its north, northeast, and from its northwest, and from its west, which meant that water coming into this little open section was from all of this area, all of this, and from the three thousand, three million square feet above, all coming into this. And this was low banks, and there was a low bank here. These low banks and this low bank here were disaster waiting to happen. Helene would have begun blowing all of this out and blowing all of this, and it had gone through his property with probably significant damage. So engineering, what I did was, I reinforced the south border of this ephemeral stream bed. So when something like Helene came across, there would be a wider reservoir here, and less likely to break out here and start flushing across. And then by building the concrete vault as the basement of our house, that is pretty much an immovable object, even to Helene. And against that, I'll use the very large boulders, which are in your package, that line this open section of stream. And I raised up the bank, reinforcing with large boulders, raised up the bank, reinforcing with large boulders. Large boulders are bolstered and backed up by the bank vault concrete mass behind it, so that when the water's coming through, it wouldn't break out of here and flush all across. And then I put in a concrete bulkhead at the head of the three-foot pipe, knowing that you've got a capacity of a four-foot pipe coming at it. And then I added another sixteen-inch culvert. I'm told it's probably the fifteen or eighteen. They probably don't, maybe don't sell a sixteen, but anyway, that's my understanding that I bought a sixteen. I put that in there and the concrete bulkhead. And so what I did by doing that, I created a sanitary stormwater retention and control, what Mr. Hamilton called a sink, to take the thrust of this water, and then as it hits the three-foot pipe and the sixteen-inch pipe, it's still not the same capacity as the other. And so this concrete bulkhead becomes a weir. In the case of Helene, it does two things. By being a larger pipe going to a smaller, and then the weir, it sort of like taps the brakes on the velocity of the water. You can't stop the volume, you can't stop the weight, but you can just tap the brakes and slow it down a certain hinch. That's stormwater management. Lake Susan does that. When all that water's coming down, the dam there is slowing it just ever so much. Now, if the dam had failed, or my engineer had failed, there wouldn't be a gate standing. If all that water plus Lake Susan suddenly breaking through, would have been a disaster. But it was engineered to stand. The left bank was engineered to stand. Moore Center was engineered to be beside a stream border. It's engineering to fit the circumstance. And so we did that. So then, we came in here, well, we have property up above, and we're getting mud from it, because there are three wells up there that the town put in, and they did no stormwater mitigation. And then they have a driveway that's steep, and when it rains, the gully washers, frog stranglers, then we get mud coming down, and it comes down here. So we installed a fifteen-foot drain here at the base of this, so that we'd be catching water in advance of it coming down into Hamilton's yard or even to ours. And then we piped it underground until it comes down safely into the stream bed down here, where it goes, continues on in its path. And then we put two dump truck loads of railroad ballast, which creates a mud mat. It's required in construction while you're doing the tearing up of the land, so that the trucks are not tracking mud onto the pavement. We put the mud mat, and that helps sift through sediment. And then, to protect Mr. Hamilton's new garden area, I put in another catch basin here. We piped all these under my property and then dropped it back in the stream where it was safe and would do no harm. And then, I had initially designed a rain garden to go in here. A rain garden could not have survived Helene. Neither the one out here do so well. That amount of water would have taken it out. So I went and took all of the two thousand eight hundred gallons I must retain and hold for between three and four days before it's released, and captured the roof water off of the house. It all goes into gutters, all from the second floor goes into the gutters, from the porch goes into the gutters, except a section of the porch right here. So here are our underground tanks that hold three thousand gallons of water. They come off of this roof, the second floor roof here, the second floor roof here, the second floor over the, of this part. And then it comes off of everything to the right of this gable. All of that comes off, it all goes into gutters and all goes into these chambers underground. And then there's a piping system that's gauged down to release that water at one gallon per minute. I have to capture twenty-eight hundred gallons. I have to make sure it's held not more than four days, but released, held for at least three. And so one gallon per minute for three and a half days empties the three thousand gallon chambers. One gallon, picture it, one minute, how long you're holding it to empty it. That's how slowly the three thousand gallons taken off that roof are released back into the stream. Mr. Hamilton argues that he's been, the virus has been damaged because that water's going in the stream, that one gallon a minute, while Hurricane Helene is barreling through. Now, right here, on this left side of this gable, this small roof section here, and this little wing of the gable, I put a gutter on it, but then I just put a hole this size in the bottom, because that drops, as it should, straight into the rocks of the stream Mr. Hamilton says he has a video to show you of it raining this past summer and water coming down there. That's where it should go. He calls this a sink. Aren't you glad you have a sink in your kitchen? So when you have running water, that's where it goes. That's basically engineering to handle the stormwater. And this is our sanitary storm basin in those photographs. So then, we had another problem. Water's coming from this side of the downhill side of the ephemeral stream, and so water's coming here and it's washing across our property and going into this low spot. Our ephemeral stream is a low spot for water coming here, water coming here, water coming here, plus the three million feet. So I've addressed it with this, I've addressed it with this, I've addressed it with these catch basins. What am I doing here? So by building my bank vault, nine-foot, eight-inch concrete wall, here in this drawing in your exhibit, here's the concrete thing. So the earth is down here, so then I brought the earth right up here, just ten inches below the foundation of the floor, and created just enough of a cant. And it's under that that I buried my systems. So that cant carries that water out onto this property to a swale that comes here. And so all this water coming there, comes across and down, and then across our backyard and into undisturbed wooded vegetative area, and in Helene, this water came across, followed that swale, and never misbehaved, and came across here, didn't even disturb the mulch in our backyard. Mr. Hamilton was concerned about environmental harm from us building a house on the edge of the stream bed. I engineered the house to go where the engineer would actually help manage stormwater. Developed and designed and built the house to do that, to support the banks of this ephemeral stream, reinforce the stream, raise this containment area, raise this containment area, put in the culvert and the weir here, there's another weir down here where when it overflows, it comes down and goes right back safely into the stream. Did all of that, which protected our property and his property. Mr. Hamilton has maintained that I piped this little bit of water from this gutter, it drops into the stream bed, and that's a bad thing, and you should judge me accordingly have done a bad thing. These are three of five pipes from Mr. Hamilton's gutters that come straight from his gutters, piped underground across this here and dumped right in the stream bed, and this other pipe is draining something else from his house, which would be a little bit hypocritical, or something like that. And so with our three thousand gallons underground, with our sanitary stormwater reservoir and basin that taps the brakes on the water and slows its velocity, with the way the house is engineered, the capturing of the water off the roof instead of a rain garden, we put together an assembly, assemblage of mechanisms to manage the stormwater, and like Underwriters Laboratory's test extension cord you used, it's got a little tag on it when you buy it, Hurricane Helene has tested our engineering, and it worked in Helene. There's no requirement for a thirty-foot setback, because it's not required anywhere in the state. But I treated it as though it was a hurricane, and it worked. I'm exhausted, and I can't remember what I haven't said, but I think I've covered the bases. We designed the house, permitted the house, I put my stamp on everything, which I'm required to do by the state. which I'm required to do by the state, to practice architecture. I added all these things to his benefit, and to the public's benefit, and they were tested, and they worked. And given that, his argument that we should move this concrete mass in the two-story house and sit on top of it over here is ludicrous and absurd. One more thing. He's a summer resident, we're full-time, we live here. We wanted to build a house. We sold our big house on North Carolina Terrace. We did VRBO, living in the basement, helped educate our two boys, Chapel Hill and Vanderbilt. We sold that house to downsize. We had this lot, two lots here, and we have a caboose, which is on an intermittent stream. And so, our plan was to build a modest house on one of these lots, and sell the other two, so that Suzie, who's 18 years younger, almost 19 years younger, I'm wearing my 80s socks today. She's gonna be with her the second time, according to the actuarial tables. And the idea is that she has a house without debt on it. So we were gonna sell the other two lots to help pay for this one. I got a septic permit on this lot and one up here. I invited the entire Planning and Zoning Commission to come up here. I staked out where the sewer went, septic went, where the two houses would go, and said, "We need to look at the setbacks in the ETJ, because we have more restrictive limitations because of septic." Mr. Hamilton had a letter read and interrupted our meeting to read a letter. Do not change the setbacks. And so, the Planning and Zoning didn't. And I continued to raise that concern. And so, the Planning and Zoning Commission, while I was on it, said, "Okay, Burns, we're gonna do conditional zoning." So if, maybe it doesn't, there's something about the chimney that bothers you, something about the front porch that bothers you, if it doesn't quite, or neighbors opposing it. You could look at the whole thing and say, "The house, if it's designed this way, and if you add this, and this, and this, and this, and this to protect the environment, if you do all of those things, instead of rain garden, you do it off the roof and underground, if you do all of those things, yes, we would allow you to have zoning for that house on this site with those conditions on it." And that's what we did. Not only that, but then, we were planning to build here. And there was a debate as to whether or not to do it here at the caboose. And so, we're gonna sell this lot. Mr. Hamilton said, "It's not a buildable lot. If you try to sell it, you must tell them to expect legal action." But we couldn't give away that land, trying to have her be comfortable with it next time. And so, we redesigned the house and put it here. And he has fought us every step of the way. It's his right. It's not his right to misrepresent environmental harm as being real, when we've shown, we've prevented it. And so then, my neighbor, Mr. Burris, he didn't want anybody next to him either. So, we swapped the lot we owned here for the lot he owned here. We had to pay him $50,000 extra to do it, but we did so. So we still have two lots to sell. This has nothing to do with what's before you. But Suzie's Director of Church Relations, 17 years here at the Conference Center. On December 1st, she'll be living in Hartsfield, South Carolina, where she accepted a call to the First Preaching Church there. In June, she graduated seminary. As Jerome Herring said to his wife, when they were looking at the file on farms, "I'm not sure I like this." His wife said, "I'm moving in here, it's up to you where you go." She's going to Hartsfield. We're moving to Hartsfield. We're gonna have to close on a house next month in Hartsfield. This house, we can't borrow a nickel on it. We can't sell it, the title's unclear. We can't wait for the years for the appellate court to decide, like the lodge here in Montreat, whether or not we can go on with our lives. So we sold this lot with one phone call to a preacher. And that lot, we've sold so we could make the down payment for mortgages in South Carolina. And on this lot, which on the 10th will belong to Reverend Kelly Fitzgerald, we've put a 20-foot easement for future sewer. That's only relevant in that there's a chimney here, two feet in a setback. But there's another 20-foot setback, because that's reserved for sewer easement. So there's zero common sense to any problem being with the chimney, nor is it a problem with Reverend Kelly. All of this is to say that I have said, "My next-door neighbor is an honorable man who believes what he believes." I had read his book cover-to-cover, The Advocate, about his prosecutor, Richard Nixon, defense of President Clinton, his impeachment, representing Marina Oswald when her husband killed Kennedy, beating Brett Kavanaugh on Supreme Court. And there's an important thing he wrote in his book, that he discovered from time to time he was wrong. You can be an honorable man and wrong. He's an honorable man, and he's wrong. We've done no environmental harm. Moving this house is not common sense, and he knows that. He's angry about us building. He didn't want to see, as he told me, a house outside of the bed and windows. But I could not afford to give him the land. They offered to buy it, but only at 30 cents on the dollar. I couldn't do that. I believe two things, that we've met every burden or threshold there can possibly be to warrant a conditional zoning approval of a single-family house on this quarter-acre lot, built as it was built, with the protection we put in it. And I believe the second thing, that if the dust settles from this, the Planning and Zoning Commission, so the Justice Stormwater Ordinance, to be that in Montreat, perennial and intermittent streams must have a 30-foot vegetative buffer on lots of one acre or more. But not on the smaller quarter-acre lot where it takes the land. Because in fact, if the house is placed properly against the stream, it's a benefit and not a risk. And I said, "Take questions."
Thank you, Mr. Burns. I have a question. Has the stream been redesignated from, what was it, ephemeral to intermittent?
Never.
So it is still designated as an ephemeral stream?
Dry as a bone. There's been 18 or 20 days in the last two years and some months that there's been water for more than a few hours after it rains. We've had one nice rain, and I got a little bit of a gurgle for like three days, which I love. But no, it's a dry stream bed.
I have another question. Were you on the zoning board when you owned that land up there?
I was on the zoning board when I owned that land. And I asked the zoning board to come up to the land I owned and look at the house I designed for either one of these lots, and the ribbon showing the setbacks, and how those setbacks were too harsh for the ETJ, where you also have to fit in a sewer. I said, "Here's the sewer, here are the setbacks, that's not fair. The Planning and Zoning Commission needs to adjust the setbacks for the ETJ area." And Mr. Hamilton opposed it. The Planning and Zoning Commission chose not to do anything.
But you were on the board at the time?
I was on that board, and we were, I got them to come up and look at it, and put a lot of money into it.
When you were on that board, were you also the person that asked that we could have conditional zoning as an option for the zoning board?
No. I asked the board to look at the setbacks, that they don't make sense. 30-foot front yard setback makes sense on flat land. All of our lots were set at quarter acres with the church when they owned it. The Whizzle Wall Survey in '35 affirmed these quarter-acre lots. That was what was right, for the modest folks to come up here and be part of this community, supporting the ministry of this community.
Yep, that wasn't my question. My question was, were you on the zoning board when this idea of you can do a conditional zoning became a reality for the zoning?
I was, but it wasn't because of me. It was because they didn't want to do what I said, "We need to change the setbacks." When you have a 30-foot setback in the mountains, that means you have to tear up 30 feet of land before you start tearing up the land for the house. Didn't make sense. But it's just hard to change a setback. So they said, "Okay, Burns, we'll do this, conditional zoning. That way, if you've got a situation with warranty, we can grant it."
Okay.
And here's that situation.
I have one more question. Mr. Hamilton, in his rebuttal, I don't, I'm not sure. At one point, he said, and I believe it was on, where is it? Can't find out where it was, but, oh, here it is, page 72. He said, "Mr. Burns has built a wall, apparently without specific MRA permission to do so. Has all of the stormwater runoff that you have done, done with MRA permission?"
Yes, they sent someone up to look at it, Kalison Berry up to look at it. And it's an interesting thing. In right-of-way, MRA was in right-of-way. What's right-of-way for? Like gutters, curbing, storm drains, plumbing, sewer, electrical. And so, yes, they okayed me putting in.
So that was okayed?
Yes.
Okay. And everything else you did as far as stormwater runoff was vetted and okayed and passed? The sink, the gutters, all of that, the rain catchment, all of that was okayed?
Yes, my stormwater plant, my original stormwater plant had a rain garden and underground. As I'm moving through the process, I began to understand that the rain garden won't do it. I've got to increase the capacity for underground storage. And so, the rooftop was the way to capture it.
And that was all vetted and agreed upon by the town? Underground catchments?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Burns, you had referred to the swale that's on the, I guess it's the south side of the house?
The west side.
West side of the house. And the easement for future?
Sewer.
Sewer. Can anything be built on top of that?
No.
Okay, so it will remain without any impervious service?
Can't plant a tree.
Right.
You can, you could have impervious on top of a sewer line that runs under the roads all the time. But you can't, but you're not to obstruct their access to maintain it. So they know that if they've got a parking spot or a driveway or anything like that, that driveway's gonna be cut. They have the right to cut that driveway.
Will the swell work if there was something put on top of it that was impervious? Does the swell need to remain as it is?
Yeah, so, no, the swell doesn't have to be 100% impervious. The swell is a depression. It's a contour of depression, so it's a channel.
To move the water.
So that's gonna, if you lay plastic on top of it, it's gonna work. Take the plastic off, some of it'll settle in. In Hurricane, none of it'll settle in, because it was saturated.
The Hamiltons provided a video of the water coming off the porch. You had noted in your comments that it was purposeful, that there was a hole in the bottom of the gutter so that the water dropped into the stream bed?
Yeah, those, this little valley right here, the gutter is right on top of the stream bed. It doesn't even make engineering sense to pipe it all the way backwards into the underground tank when you, that small amount of water is totally appropriate to drop into the sink. That's the right place for it, for that tiny amount. But the mass of that is collected off all the other roofs.
Can I please make a comment?
As part of the, as part of the presenting of the application, yes.
Respectfully, I've said nothing. But respect, and I'm sorry that I'm emotional, but this has been a hard journey, and I want nothing more to settle this from him. And we've tried. We were reasonable people, people, but just for a perspective, something Wade did not say is we lived through Hurricane Helene. We were there. We saw it functioning. It worked perfectly. If we would have not built, his house would have been destroyed by the trees that we had to take out. Respectfully, this is from the borough's property that has done no stormwater damage, or no stormwater, and is doing all the damage, and it comes down every single time it rains. So with whatever video Mr. Hamilton showed you, respectfully, we are there all the time. He's been there three weeks this summer, and that's it. He wasn't here during Hurricane Helene. This right here was done during building. This was coming across from the neighbor above him who has done nothing. This is his dirt meeting his dirt that came across our property. This is the town wells that you all have done nothing, nothing to mediate stormwater, nothing. It's coming down the hill that we've mediated to save everybody in this valley. This captures that. We didn't have to do that by law. We did that to protect Mr. Hamilton. We did this to protect Mr. Hamilton. This is water during Hurricane Helene that is clear, right here, coming through. That's what it's meant to do. So respectfully, I understand that there's litigation out. That is because we could not settle a ridiculous settlement offer that Mr. Hamilton made, because it wouldn't have worked. So respectfully, I appreciate you listening and the willingness to allow us the time, and the willingness, and I am grateful for your coming up to look at the project. So I appreciate that. But this shows you where the paths are coming, and they are not from our property.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. and Mrs. Burns?
I have a question. When you were in the process of constructing the home, you went through the zoning and everything here what the city has contemplated and expected, correct?
Yes.
And is that, is that also, is that where the Board of Adjustments, Decisions, they played into that process? And that's the decision that the Circuit Court, the Judge of Superior Court, said they acted inappropriately?
No, the, what, I got, have we had all the permits? We were already underway when Mr. Hamilton got with...
Let me rephrase my question. I don't think I'm making myself clear. When you went through all of what you need to do to build this beautiful home, the Board of Adjustment signed off on it at some point. And that is the decision that the judge found inappropriate?
The judge found that, several things. The judge found that Mr., several things. Mr. Hamilton argued that they had not crossed some Ts or dotted some Is, that when they voted, that maybe they voted on the chimney and the front porch at the same time, and it needed to be separate, or whatever procedural thing he was arguing. And so, the judge called the lawyers for both sides, lawyer and their lawyer, and just told them, this, there's thousands of pages in this thing. And the judge spent an entire weekend trying to read it, and just told the two lawyers, listen, the house is not coming down. Y'all need to get together and work something out. So Mr. Hamilton gave them this proposal that we connect these pipes, which have been plumbing foolish.
I'm going to interrupt you, sir. I'm sorry. I'm not making myself clear, and I apologize. I very much appreciate your candor. All I want to make sure that I understand is that the Board of Adjustment signed off on your project, and the judge found that that act was inappropriate. Is that correct?
He, he said there's enough confusion, I'm speaking there. There's enough confusion as to whether or not they crossed Ts and dotted Is. Not that it was a wrong decision, but they might not have followed the exact procedure. And therefore, it needs to go back to the town. It needs to go to appellate court, and it needs to go back to the town to address it.
The judge said it needs to go.
Can I, can I say something real quick? I was on the Board of Adjustments for this decision, for both of the decisions.
Well, I'm just.
And so, I'm going to tell you what, very succinctly, what I remember about that decision.
Can I try to clear it up first?
Can I do that? Go ahead, please.
If I don't make this clear, then I think we can dive into it a little more. So, the decision of the Board of Adjustment was appealed to Superior Court. The Superior Court made its ruling that there were questions that needed to be answered that were not addressed at the, at the Board of Adjustment. So the Superior Court remanded the, the issue back to the Board of Adjustment. So when the Superior Court makes a decision like that, an applicant has a choice to either allow the permit to go back and be heard again by the Board of Adjustment, or appeal to the Court of Appeals. I'm not sure how much the details of what the court said, you know, what, what, you know, the order that was issued for the Board of Adjustment, I think speaks for itself. And the order of the court about that, that special use permit, or that variance that was issued, also speaks for itself. So I think that if we need to take some time to read those documents in full, that is something we could do, but I don't think we, I would advise against going off of memory.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I promise you, this is a simple question. I'm sorry if I'm not making it clear. The judge said it's got to be remanded to the Board of Adjustment, correct? That they had done, like you said, didn't cross Ts and dotted Is, correct?
Correct.
That's where you're at with the legal proceedings.
Correct.
Well, I just want.
Go ahead.
It's been appealed to the North Carolina Court of Appeals.
I understand that. I understand that. But.
Respectfully, we, in other words, the judge sent it back to the Board of Adjustment. Respectfully, that's a quasi-judicial, that is where the quasi-judicial, in other words, if we went back to the Board of Adjustment and the Board of, we went through the same arguments that were trying to be made, essentially, what would happen is we would be back in court against Mr. Hamilton the same exact way. We would be on a, on a wheel going forward of just this incessant pressure from having an unresolved piece. So, and we, our attorney responded as far as exactly what the court did say. We, you received a letter from our attorney stating that, if I'm not mistaken.
I've also taken the time to try and wrap my head around the best direction to give to the board on how to deal with these two things that are going on.
Okay.
The first answer that I, and I realize I gave you two answers when I answered, when I, when we talked about this at the beginning of the hearing. The first answer I said is, they're on different tracks, and that you can go on this track without really concerning yourself about what's going on in that quasi-judicial process and the appeal. I do think that's accurate. I think that, and taking, let's pan out from this and just think about another situation. If someone is, is pursuing a special use permit and decides in the middle of that process, you know, I think I might want a conditional zoning application, you know, a conditional zoning permit instead. I believe that they can decide to pursue that permit. Now, whether they can hold two permits at the same time might be a complicated question, but that's not where we are right now. So right now, I think is just the time for this board to evaluate what is presented to us, what is presented to it, and decide whether it thinks a condition, whether it wants to recommend to the town commissioners whether it should approve this conditional zoning application. I really don't think this board needs to concern itself with the contents of the DOA decision or the decision that's been, the Superior Court order that is on appeal to the North Carolina Court. Yes, sir.
Yeah. If we accept this petition, and I'm not there yet, I'm just saying if we do, and the commission, the council approves it, what would it look like? Would it be a specific zoning for that lot that includes, for example, if we accept everything Mr. Burns has said, that it would list out that? Or would it be something else? But it would be the binding regulation for that property, is that correct?
That's right. And just generally speaking, in conditional zonings, what you usually see is a detailed site plan, and the ordinance references that site plan and says that that is how the property must be maintained unless there is a change to that ordinance.
Something similar to this, this diagram with all of the, is that correct?
I believe that's right.
Okay, so.
And this is probably more board deliberation kind of stuff, so you may want to, if Mr. Burns has anything else to say, you may want to hear from him, or I think he's already said. If you have any more questions for Mr. Burns, you can do that, hear from the rest of your speakers, and then transfer back to board deliberations.
Are there any more questions for Mr. Burns? All right. Thank you, Mr. Burns.
My understanding is that if the town council approves the conditional zoning, that nobody has any suit, any cause for a suit to make. They have to sue the town and say they didn't have the ability to make the decision they made. So that's why this is more, makes more sense than going back to Board of Adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any representatives for the Hamiltons who wish to speak? I did want to ask Josh if you could play the MOV attachment. I did want to see that video that the Hamiltons sent in the email to the PNC Commission. So do we still have Josh? Thank you.
Madam Chair, while he's queuing that up.
Yep.
Did you, and I might have just missed it, did you give an opportunity for people to speak in favor of Mr. Burns? I think I heard.
Yeah, I did want to, I was going to play, should I wait to play and do that afterwards?
I think you can just give a general invitation for anyone to speak on whatever thoughts they have on this legislative zoning application.
That sounds good. Are there additional speakers? And if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself by name and address, that'd be great.
Elizabeth Dibert, recent new resident. We've owned a property on Calvin Trail for 10 years, and we've just moved here. Glad to be here with all of you. And I just want to speak to the integrity of Wade and Susie Burns. We've watched this whole process. We've seen them work very hard to meet all the requirements and to go beyond those requirements. And so, I just want to affirm that, that I trust all that they've done, and I hope that you will see fit to provide this conditional zoning.
I'm Shirley Mitchell. I live at 201 Harmony Lane. My husband and I have lived here full-time, 29 years. And just one comment I'll make, Montreat kills people. And when my husband and I first moved here, we had three horrible things happen. And Charlie said to me, okay, I'll move anywhere you want to go. Where do you want to go? And I didn't have anywhere to go. There is a huge spiritual battle over Jesus, over Montreat. Just know that. Okay, I've known Wade and Susie a long, long time, and I absolutely love them. And we can differ from here to there politically and every other way. Wade is ever a gentleman, ever a gentleman. I completely trust him. I watched him with Susie's son, sons. We were in the parade together many years. I just, I absolutely love, I love Wade and the Lord Jesus, and I love Susie. I prayed for a wife for Wade. So please realize, please realize, Jesus, the whole reason you're alive is to make that decision for Jesus, and that is the battle here. I'll add him, Ken to Billy Graham, you know, blah, 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 blah. But we still have our own choices to make. Thank you.
Beth Barker, 609 Upper Way. And I'm tired of watching neighbors sue neighbors. So if there's anything you can do to help us, know there's a other way to do it. I would really appreciate it. Thanks.
Other speakers?
I'd like to speak. For the past, geez, I think it's been four to five years now, I've been a member of the Planning and Zoning Committee, and I represent that area of Montreat, the ETJ there. And I have never imagined that it would come to something like this for people who, and for full disclosure, I also own the property up there. And I have worked with Wade on the committee at the same time. I'm not biased towards them, but I am very concerned about how we proceed for that territory and that property. And I have never seen anyone in any building that has gone on in all of Montreat go through the process and decision-making and trying to fit a plan together that would accommodate both the environment and the efficiency of the home. Wade just barely tapped on the issues of the swells and stuff, but even still, he's got water coming down his own driveway to take it off the area from up above his properties that you saw flowing in. But it is just amazing to me that there has been this level of attack, I would say, honestly, by the Hamilton family towards Wade and the home that he has put there. I've never seen one as well-engineered as this one, and the efforts that were taken to mitigate every little aspect to accommodate the constraints that the town of Montreat puts on his own people. I don't know why we think this is the Garden of Eden, and everything has to be maintained to that level. We have storms. We have runoff. We have mud, other things, landslides, trees coming down. My property right below his sustained probably more tree damage than anything out there. They had to clear most of the trees off the road and access to the wellhead up there that came from my property. And I'm very grateful to the town of Montreat for doing that. But this was a very serious storm. And I watched as the storm affected the area. There was like zero damage done as it passed through that, what is normally is the bed for an ephemeral stream, a bed that they had dug out to actually allow more water to more directly flow. The pipes and everything that have been erected do more than anything that had been done there before, and have done a lot to protect the Hamilton home there that I knew years ago, and it stood for a long time. It's had a lot of issues. It was lucky it didn't get hit, taken out by a tree or two with the winds that we had. You know, the issues that they have and the limitations they're trying to put on this property, this already-built home that has already been vetted by every person along the way, and I will say for the Planning and Zoning Committee, we have gone out of our way to interpret all the latest laws and other things and incorporate them into the town of Montreat's planning and zoning. And we have, you know, nitpicked and maybe overdone it, but the whole intent was to allow people like me, who purchased land up there in 1996, to eventually develop it without so many complications that we would paint ourselves into a corner. I know there are people that want to keep undeveloped areas of Montreat undeveloped, but people like me who've been paying taxes on it for a very long time kind of resent the fact that, you know, we don't know which way to turn. I have also offered up a right-of-way through my property so we can get some sewage up there, because the town doesn't want to do it for us. We're an incorporated portion of the town, and that seems unfair, too. But, you know, we're taxpayers, and if the town really wanted to move on some of these things, they ought to incorporate us as part of the town itself. But I do believe that for everyone who is trying to, you know, build on properties up there, we should not make it so hard on ourselves. We've had people where they have put roads through where it's outside of the, you know, right-of-ways and cutting into other people's properties, and it's just amazing that that area was given so little regard to begin with, and now it's become a part of a petty battle, which to me means, I mean, really mean-spirited attack on the efforts of the Burns to try to do something, just to reclaim, claim some family land at below-budget costs. I think that Mr. Hamilton probably has a lot better way to spend his time and just be contented that he's got a piece of property that he can come up to three, four weeks a year, if that's all he's going to invest in it. But nothing has been done to damage it from any of the work that's been done. If anything, it's mitigated it. And again, just the fact that it survived the storm the way it did, it was due in large part to the fact that Ms. Burns here had taken all the effort to make sure that there was no damage to his, his neighbor or his home. And with that, I'll be quiet. Thank you.
I think we've effectively transitioned into the commissioner deliberations. Thank you. Josh, do you have our short clip ready from the Hamiltons? Okay, I want to make sure I can see that. I did see it on my own. Thank you. So I just wanted to make sure that we could see that, as I know is part of the materials that we received. All right, commission deliberations. Questions, concerns that we want to talk about amongst ourselves?
I just wanted, I did a little research, and because I'm confused on this issue of intermittent versus ephemeral streams.
Make sure you close the mic. Close the mic, please.
I looked into the regulations on streams, and because based on what the Board of Adjustment looked at, ephemeral streams are basically things that only have water when it rains. And I was curious about what Mr. Burns said, and in the North Carolina, neither the forestry or Department of Environmental Quality regulate ephemeral streams. They suggest that there be a storm management set in. So I just wanted to put that as background. If we're going to look at his petition, then what, you know, how are we looking at it? What do we have to determine if what is appropriate or not? What do we have to determine if what is appropriate or not? So, you know, if it isn't an ephemeral stream, do we only look at a storm management zone? Or if it's not an ephemeral stream, is there something else that has to be considered?
So on packet page 38, there's the letter from the North Carolina Environmental Quality. It says the Department of Environmental Quality that indicates it's an ephemeral stream. And it says it's, the determination expires five years from the day of this letter, which was June 2021. So, you know, I'm not an expert, but it looks to me like that letter. Describing it as ephemeral is still effective until June of 2026.
So does that, am I right in interpreting that as we evaluate this position or this proposal, that it's, we're taking it under the assumption that it is an ephemeral stream? And is the storm management zone appropriate? Is that correct?
My review of the materials is that a Department of the state of North Carolina has determined it's an ephemeral stream. And not being an expert in water quality, I'm relying on that.
But it's our job to evaluate whether this proposal is appropriate for this land to protect the environment and ecology and everything, things like that. Is that correct?
There are several factors you consider, and yeah, I think that that is one of them.
Because I just want to make sure, I'm not trying to get ahead of things, I just want to make sure I know exactly what I'm supposed to be trying to resolve here.
And I would keep in mind that the stormwater ordinance will apply. So if the board, if, when a conditional zoning is approved, that is approving the site plan. And then that site plan will go through the planning process and will be reviewed by the zoning administrator to look at those details and make sure that whatever is on the ground complies with the North Carolina laws and the town ordinances as they relate to stormwater. So while I think that the board can consider these things, you know, I think it should also consider that portion, that it's going to go through a planning process. Yeah, and, you know, this is for, you'll hear me say this a lot whenever we can consider one of these things, that the ordinances are going to apply to these decisions.
Can I point out something about the judge's ruling? And I won't belabor, and I won't go into what the Board of Adjustment did at that time. But on page, packet page 82, this is the findings of the court. It said, "The BOA is not required to follow the opinion of any decision of the former zoning administrator or any state employee in determining how to interpret Section 305." So basically, the judge was saying, no matter what Mr. Burns had, he had this stream designated as an ephemeral stream, the judge is saying, we don't have to follow that. That's what that sentence says there, which I find amusing somewhat.
Help me. Let me be in a minute.
So I, and I think this gets, this does sort of get into the weeds of what was at issue here. I think that, and I'm going to give this for color, but please understand that this is me giving you my best understanding of the order as I remember it, right? But my understanding is that the, it was important to the court that the Board of Adjustment consider the thing, rather than saying, "We aren't going to consider it," because there's already a letter from the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. That's my understanding. And so the court was not saying that the board had to accept the letter, or had to reject the letter, or had to disagree with the letter. It was just one of the finding that it was considered and, that it was considered by the Board of Adjustment. Does that clear anything up, or does that make the water muddier?
So the site plan includes the improvements to the area around the stream. That includes the additional culvert, that includes the addition of the concrete reinforcement, the addition of the boulders.
I believe so. I would, I would suggest using this latest plan as a basis. If you should, if you should desire to make this a condition, I would use this plan.
So the questions that have come up, there's the setback on the front end side, there's the potential contamination of the stream, and then there's the damage, potential damage from the runoff. Is that, are those the main issues? Is that correct?
Well, I would say the conditional zone is seeking setback changes. So that's the application. And that's, and then, as Brandon and Alexis have helped us confirm, as part of the conditional zone, these site plans would be submitted and be part of that.
So I was just trying to put it into parcels so we could...
Consider it.
Consider, you know, the impact. So, you know, there's, I think the easy ones are the two-feet additional setback for the chimney and maybe the front setback. I don't know if you want to discuss those first, and then...
Sure.
Does any, I, I think, from my opinion, based on what I've seen, those are setbacks that are granted periodically. I don't know that there's any reason that they would be a problem, but that's based on what I've seen. But you're on the Board of Adjustment.
Those were variances that were constantly coming up in front of the Board of Adjustments, and we would look at it and see if it, did it impact anybody unusually? And we decided no, that that was not an unusual hardship on anyone.
So for the 30-foot setback for the stream, if I understand correctly, for an ephem, oh, sorry. As I understand it, for an ephemeral stream, there's no legal requirement for a 30-foot setback by either the North Carolina Forestry Department or Environmental Quality. The questions that were raised were, is there any potential damage to, from runoff or pollution of the stream? Mr. Burns has given us a lot of information on the water flow and how he's, in his opinion, he's mitigated the damage from water. I don't know if there's anything else to add on potential pollution of the creek. I know there's, I don't know how to judge that. I don't know if anybody's got any experience or thoughts on that, but there's, whenever it rains, there's always runoff from the streets and houses and things. So I don't know how to judge whether anything additional is polluting the stream than what would normally be considered. Maybe you all have more experience or thoughts on that.
I don't know that the town of Montreat even has anybody that assesses that, other than the plan that they ask you to put in place to show your mitigation of such. And again, from where the Burns property is right there, there's not a whole lot of pollution coming through it. You have a septic system, is that not correct? And there are others that haven't. The Hamilton house had a septic system too, and it ruptured some years ago, and they had to, you know, have them replace that and do some other things. That's some of the issues, that's the pollution and contamination. Otherwise, you're talking about sticks, leaves, other branches that go in, the darn hemlock trees that keep dying and falling across the stream that can re-revert the water and everything else. There's nothing in the homes that are built that isn't already considered for the most part, unless you damage a tree that might fall across the stream. And again, we're not talking an ephemeral stream, we're talking flat creek that originally is not too far from that property up there, so.
So as I looked at the materials and thought about the water flow, there is the additional control that comes from the improvements to the stream bed on the property, as well as the gutter system around the second floor of the house, and the tanks, and the swale. I do think you build a house, and it changes the nature of the water flow across the land, and I think that's not surprising, and there's been significant mitigations that have been put in place. The contamination that the Hamiltons are concerned about, I don't have any more information other than what's in the packet. You know, I would expect that there's going to be something that's going to land on a roof that could be considered a contaminant, and then carried through the gutter system into the tanks, and eventually into the stream. I just don't have any more information on what those contaminants would be. I have a home in Montreat. I'm just not aware of any contaminants that would be hitting this roof.
I know that there's been conditions put on other houses built recently. Build, it's, I think correctly, Montreat is being much more strict on controlling the water that crosses your land. And there's a house down the street from where I live on Maryland Place, they, two houses, they had to do significant storm water management practices in order to get permission to build. So I don't think that's uncommon. I think it's typical for Montreat just because of the conditions that we live under. So I guess from my, having to do a conditional zone is, is a little odd, given that how it's normally handled in the town. But, you know, given the situation that we have, you know, it does raise interesting questions about, is that the only way to try to resolve this?
Well, I understand that question. I'm not sure that we can address it as part of this proceeding. But I do think the question in front of us is, are we prepared to consider this conditional zoning application, which means that we would move out of this section of the discussion and into a vote? But I want to make sure that, yeah, please go ahead.
I, I keep struggling, and I feel like I'm missing something. Certainly, the petitioners have put on a compelling presentation. I don't know what else anybody could have done up there to address this water problem. And maybe it's not perfect, you know, but who's going to have a perfect plan, right? And so this court has chosen to say, no, the procedure that you relied upon, and justifiably so, right? Nobody said, "We're kidding," or wink, wink, we'll give you a zoning pass. You're doing just what you're supposed to do. Your neighbor says, "I don't like it," has every right to do it. Go to the court, and the court says, "I think that the Board of Adjustment needed to do something differently." And I'm going to look at you because I know you're the bad guy.
I mean, I think at this point, I have to say, I have to recuse myself from the vote.
So what I don't understand, I'm assuming that the petitioners have appealed that ruling. And my question is, why doesn't it just, as a matter of course, go back to the Board of Adjustment? As opposed to asking this board to entertain a conditional, which I understand is going to be, have to be written in as an ordinance, like any other ordinance. There's going to be a specific ordinance addressing this particular piece of property. Correct?
That's right.
And assuming that the city board approves that, then we're going to have an ordinance that deals with it. Is that going to do away with the question about what the appellate court does? I mean, does that take the Board of Adjustment out of it?
Yeah, so that's, again, what I'm talking about when I say that they are two separate tracks. So if, you know, if there is a, let's pan out of this case and just think of another case. If there was an applicant who was pursuing a special use permit, and at some point in that process said, "I'm going to pursue instead a conditional zoning process," they could move, they could make that choice and file an application. So I think that, again, the job of this board is to listen to what it's heard and make a recommendation based on that. You know, I guess reasonable minds could raise the question, why would you submit for a conditional zoning application instead of going back to a Board of Adjustment? But I think that the ordinance allows for someone to ask this town to consider a conditional zoning application.
Would that have supremacy over any BOA decision, a conditional zoning?
So that is a question that I don't want to say that it would be supreme over a Board of Adjustment decision, but I think that at some point, and this is not where we are now, this is an applicant who's asking, you know, this board to make a recommendation to the town commissioners. At some point, I do think that an applicant may have to choose, does it want to keep its special use permit, or keep pursuing its special use permit process? Or does an applicant want to sign off and say, "I agree to these conditions," and then the ordinance can be enacted? So I think that the applicant would at some point have to choose, you know, does it want this conditional zoning ordinance, or does it want the special, I don't think you'd have both, but again, I would need to look into that. But that's not where we are today. Today, I believe this board is just looking at whether it would recommend.
Yeah, but you're asking us, when you say that you're asking us to pay, to disregard the equities involved in this.
I don't think so. I think that applicants deserve, that applicants have the right to make an application and get a fair shake, regardless of what other pending legal proceedings they have going on.
So if there's a conditional zoning, that in perpetuity until it's legally changed restricts the use of that land to exactly what was in the site plan? Is that correct?
That's exactly right. That's why you might see more people who are looking for variances, rather than, you know, a conditional zoning application. But I think it's an applicant's right to decide which one to pursue.
So if, if somebody has a site plan, and five years later, they want to add additional building, a garage or something?
Add-on.
What, what would they have to do? Would they have to come back and ask for amendment to that conditional zone?
That's exactly right. They would have to ask for an amendment to that conditional zoning ordinance, and it would require renotice and a hearing for the planning board to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners.
I had to go through this whole thing again to add-on a...
So if...
That's right. That's right.
So it's, it's, that's one of the, one of the things that would limit people wanting to use a conditional zone in the future. So...
I think that's fair to say.
So I did want to address, Eleanor, your comment about recusal. Are you recusing yourself?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
So the board would have to vote on that, and I would remind the board that in order to recuse somebody, they need to be able to show a readily identifiable financial conflict. So I...
I have no financial interest in that.
Yeah, I do, I do not think that previous service on a Board of Adjustment would prohibit you from voting today. I am happy to research that and look into it, especially if anyone else on the board is uncomfortable, or if the applicant is uncomfortable.
So if I understand what you were saying about it's, it's up to the person applying to go whichever route they feel is most appropriate, then any questions about whether impact further down or overuse of the, that's for the council to decide, correct? So we just, it's like if, if I want to go with this builder, or I want to go with that builder, it's my choice. You're saying that for someone to say, to go through the Board of Adjustment or go through a conditional zoning, it's their choice? And it really shouldn't matter which they choose? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think that's right. I think that this board can, can look at this application, like I said, then... I think that this board can, can look at this application, like I said, deny it or approve it for whatever reasons it deems valid.
Yeah.
I do not think it would have been appropriate to say that the conditional zoning cannot be applied for. And, you know, I think that denying it solely on the reason that there was a pending lawsuit may also not be appropriate.
Okay.
I, you know, now there's a lot more leeway in a conditional zoning setting than there is a quasi judicial setting. But, you know, we're, again, the board is here today looking at a recommendation and I think that the board should look at, should not focus on a past Board of Adjustment decision or a currently pending case in the Court of Appeals when making that decision. I think the board should look at the evidence that it has or the materials that it has in front of it today.
The ordinance says the P&amp;Z Commission shall always have the discretion to decline to exercise its delegated authority if it believes a request to change should be deemed a resoning application requiring dot, dot, dot. So the board does have the discretion to say, we don't want to deal with this.
I think that dot, dot, dots might be important, but I need to pull it up.
Requiring a public hearing and town Board of Commissioners approval under the circumstances.
What section are you on, Mike?
This is 510.63. It's, and that's what I'm, I'm struggling myself and it may just be me, but what I don't understand is how is this going to resolve anything for the, to the benefit of the city? I'm not going to project myself into the petitioner's judgment and decision-making. He's obviously decided that this is an avenue to go as opposed to waiting for the appeal or going back in front of the BOA. But I'm struggling with the city being asked to interject itself into, and I know you're saying it's two different avenues, but I'm having a very difficult time distinguishing these two. It's all about whether or not the city is going to permit the petitioners to stay in that residence. You know, I can make the argument that it strikes me as totally bizarre that they went through all the process and now somebody's saying, you didn't do it right. I mean, I consider that suspect, but that's just me. And I find myself struggling with, am I supposed to be given any consideration to what's in the best interest of the town of Montreat? I mean, the money involved with this new, you know, and I don't see how this is going to resolve anything. This is just going to be appealed.
So can I, can I just, the first question you asked involved 510.63, that is, that is not what's happening today. That is if there were a request to alter a previously granted conditional zoning. So that, that section doesn't apply here. As far as should you consider what is in the best interest of the town? Absolutely. I want to go back to the general descriptions.
Well, this.
The review process is established and this ordinance provides for accommodation of such development by reclassification of property into a conditional zoning district subject to specific conditions and standards which promote or provide for the compatibility of use and development of the subject parcel within the use and development of neighboring properties. So I think you do consider, is this a good idea for the town? Is this a good idea for neighboring properties? And that is 510.1.
I'd like to address kind of, I think where you're going with this. I may be wrong.
Go ahead.
We've got a situation where house was approved, somebody didn't like it, it goes to court, there's a wrangle. Now, after the fact, trying to resolve this is to do a conditional zoning. If the house hadn't been built and they got a ruling from the Board of Adjustment they didn't like, is that now opening it up to people to just ignore the Board of Adjustment and just go for conditional zoning? I can see that happening if a house hadn't been built, but now a house has been built and they don't like, and I, you know, like I said, I think they went through the right processes, but now we're asked to readjust because they, they didn't get a legal ruling that they liked. Instead of going back to the Board of Adjustment, let's go this route. So it's not about whether, to me, it's not about whether the house was permitted properly or anything, it's the route that this is all taking. Does, you know, does that mean the Board of Adjustment becomes irrelevant if anybody can just go?
I think I'm in agreement with you and that's why I'm having a hard time.
Yeah, that's, that's my point. Is the Board of Adjustment irrelevant if you don't get the right answer?
So.
So that's what I'm arguing about is the process, not whether it's.
And I'm trying to see what, how we're supposed to navigate the process, although I think council is telling us, we're not supposed to navigate it. We're supposed to make a decision as the Board of.
Yeah, as the Planning and Zoning Commission. So we have an application in front of us that's been duly submitted. Staff has indicated that it's complete. Any, any future discussion that the P&amp;Z wants to take about any concerns about how the Board of Adjustment and the ordinances thereto, you know, how, how the CZ and the Board of Adjustment interact, I think that's something that we can take up. But I also think, looking at the application in front of us, there is a request for changes and setbacks. And I agree, Mike, it's, there is a lot other stuff going on. But for me, the application has been submitted, there's very specific requests, and the question in front of the P&amp;Z is, is do we recommend that this be submitted to the town, to the Board of Commissioners for consideration of approval? And one of the conditions that is effectively included by, by requiring that site plan to be submitted and to become a formal part of this, the granting of the conditional zone, are those improvements to the stream bed. So I, I've been spending a lot of time thinking about this, as I can see everybody has been. There's a lot going on and yet there is an application in front of us for consideration.
I think the point you made is recommendation to the council in that, I understand exactly what you're saying and I agree, and I've struggled with that too. But, you know, I hate the phrase, but it's above my pay grade. You know, I, my understanding is that we have a request, we need to make a decision on that, we make the recommendation to the council, the council has to wrangle the Board, Judgment and everything else. And as citizens and P&amp;Z members, I think we can certainly express our opinion to the council members as they do that. But, you know, I, as we've listened to all this, I've listened to our lawyer, you know, I really, I feel like I need to make a decision just based on the application. And then afterwards, you know, we've got to wrangle with this decision about, you know, whether it's conditional zoning or Board of Adjustment. But like I said, that's, that's for tomorrow, as far as I'm concerned. But I agree, it's something that we, I think does need to be discussed. But it's, we're in a litigious society. I mean, we've seen it happen in other parts of the town. And, you know, it's, we kind of have to make sure if we don't follow the regulations, the guidance exactly as it's supposed to do, then I think we get, we open ourselves up. And, you know, if we decided we didn't want to entertain this in that setting of precedence for anybody else that comes in, you know, for additional, if there's another conditional zoning, so I think we can't ignore it. But, you know, it, we do have to make a decision based on its merits.
So effectively, the, the site plan and the improvements are, would be part of the conditions. The other thing that I've noted is I do think those are improvements that benefits the town and the downstream neighbors to ensure that the storm water is able to orderly go through that stream bed and continue on. It has definitely struck me, not quite yet as a full-time resident of the town, but we are all grappling with the storm water issues and we will continue to do so. So those improvements have already been made, which is why I thought it was important to understand whether that would be part of any granting of the conditional zone. And, and as we've all discussed, the, the Board of Commissioners will make the decision. You know, our role is only to make a recommendation and, you know, make sure that we can do it to the best of our ability. It's a complex situation, but there's an application in front of us.
So can I, just for clarity's sake, we are looking at this application, we're ignoring everything else, lawsuits, anything else around. We are looking at what's been presented to us. The zoning administrator has said, all these hillside things, they don't apply, and we're going to listen to our administrators, that we are voting on as presented to uphold the setbacks that have been previously decided or that have been presented to us. Is that what we're doing?
So we can vote to accept the application and recommend approval as it is written.
Okay.
Which would include that site plan.
Okay.
We can add, we have the right to add additional conditions. So that is part of 510 dot three or 510. There's discussions in 510 dot three around conditions, which is why I was really interested in the swale.
The upgraded kind of part of.
Exactly, the upgrades. And there's certainly consideration in the town's comp plan. You know, there's certainly sections in there that talk about water quality and storm water runoff. And so I did look back at the town plan. For example, on page 50, exploring the adoption of additional stream protection ordinances, page 54, additional community interest in storm water plans, voluntary storm water controls, you know, things like that. So, so there's clearly an interest from the town which predates the lane, right? And ensuring that there is a focus on this, some of which, of course, has come to the P&amp;Z and we are working our way through. So I, I find those improvements compelling and supportive of the town's interests. I do recognize there is so much else going on, but I think that there are other avenues, whether the litigation continues or not, you know, that's an avenue that community members can, can undertake and the Board of Adjustment remains available. So I might be a little bit more of a black and white person when it comes to decisions like this, but I personally am, I can make a decision on a recommendation. I think the question for each of the other members is whether you're prepared, if you have additional questions to ask, including of the applicants, or whether you're ready to move to a vote or you want more discussion.
I'm curious if anybody has additional requirements on, on water quality or pollution. Is there something that, because that's the one thing that was raised in some of the public comments, I'm just trying to be careful. Is there something else, you know, periodic monitoring required or, or something else to, just, or evaluation just to address that concern that came up?
Alexis can help me with this, but I believe that there is a storm water maintenance agreement.
Yeah, so they.
Can you bring the mic a little closer?
Oh, I'm so sorry. There's, we call it an operation and maintenance agreement. I think it might be called something else, but they are required to have this recorded at the Buncombe County Register of Deeds and it goes with, with the property. It gives us, it gives the town the ability to go and inspect these properties and I believe it's a yearly inspection, but there is, there are requirements for inspection.
And that's recorded at the Register of Deeds and runs with the land.
That's, that goes with the conditional zoning or is that an additional thing that you would add as a requirement?
It goes with a, a storm water operation and maintenance agreement that's been agreed to and filed with the town. It would apply either to, it applies to, to this property. So it would apply if there were a special use permit issued. It would also apply if there was a conditional zoning.
So what, what happens is usually during zoning compliance, when we look, we ask, we request on the site plan that they tell us about impervious surface and disturbed area. If the impervious surface is 24% of the total lot, that would make, that triggers the storm water plant. So for example, someone could just build stairs, but because they built those stairs, they could trigger it. Or if they have 5,000 square feet of disturbance, that could cause them to have a storm water management plant. And depending on how much disturbance, for example, say they do 10,000, over 10,000 square feet of disturbance, it might be more storm water requirements. So there are more, there are more, you know, they might need underground tanks, they might need this. When it's under 10,000, it could be simple things like rain gardens, swales, cisterns, things like that.
So you're saying that's already built into the proposal as submitted?
Yes, he had, he had already, Mr. Burns had already recorded a operations and maintenance agreement.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I believe the board may have planned consistency statement, suggested drafts. I think that the board should look at those and talk about it. I think it's important for the board to remember, this is why there is a requirement in North Carolina for planned consistency statements, is for the board to consider its land use plan when it makes these decisions. I wrote down a couple of suggestions. You all are familiar with your land use plan, so you may have more, but it's a requirement under North Carolina law that the board adopt a consistency or an inconsistency statement saying that the proposed use is consistent or is not consistent. The board can approve or deny the project with any combination, so it could find that the plan is inconsistent and yet approve or is consistent and yet deny. But it is important that the board consider those.
Yeah, thank you. That was one of the reasons why I was looking at the plan and, and those specific pages that I referenced around the adoption of additional stream protection and, and opportunities for voluntary storm water control measures. It is part of the considerations in, in the comp plan. I think a lot of us were probably really interested in that when that was being updated. In my view, the additional stream protections are consistent.
And I have one other quick question too. If we go through all this and through our planning and zoning efforts, does this get trumped by some future thing, by issues with, you know, what the Board of Adjustments did or did not allow? And so even if we go forward with this, it's like, no, you can't do that because this, this trumps this or trumps what we say today. I just, I'm still kind of unclear on where we are.
The supremacy of it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, I mean, we're doing our part here to allow what has been done to stay in place after it was already approved by a Board of Adjustments, but if there's a lawsuit against the town of, of Montreat because of, you know, incomplete assessment by the Board of Adjustments, then, you know, where does that leave us?
So.
I, I mean, honestly, it, it really seems to be.
No, it's, I think it's impossible to.
Yeah, I mean, we don't know what's going to happen in the future, you know, in any, it's. Yeah, I mean, we don't know what's going to happen in the future, you know, in any, it's, any decision that is ever made by a board can be challenged. So, if the board never made a decision on anything that came before it, for, you know, wondering, will this be appealed? Could this be challenged? The answer is always yes. Any legislative decision can be challenged, quasi judicial decision can be challenged. Sometimes they are, sometimes they aren't. So, I think that's why, you know, the best advice I can give this board is to look at the application that is in front of it and make a decision based on that application as best you can without regard to, you know, whether it's going to be appealed.
Any other discussion? Any other questions? Okay. Brandon, help me make sure I get this right. So, the vote would need to consider the question of consistency with the comprehensive plan?
So, I think you do them as two separate. I think the board should have a vote on consistency or inconsistency and then a motion on the applicant, a vote on the application itself.
Brandon, quickly, I think there were several site plans, and I'm wondering if we need to have clarification that it's on the most recent site plan that Mr. Burns had submitted, which I think he gave to me on Tuesday?
I think that would be important. We need to know which site plan the board is voting on. Is that the same site plan that Mr. Burns used in his application?
Yes, this is the same one that you gave me on Tuesday.
They are identical, really, with the addition of the arrowheads and the dimensions.
If you wouldn't mind repeating that, Mr. Burns at the mic.
Talking about this being the change right here.
Those two exhibits, it's the same exhibit, but I just added the big arrowheads and the dimensions of those setbacks. But, no, nothing has changed, none of the lines have changed, none of the drawings were changed. It's exactly the same, but I just blew over top of it.
I think those arrowheads are very useful because it outlines what setbacks you're requesting with this conditional zoning. So, I would say that this one, this one is the one I received, you handed to me on the 21st. Is that correct? Okay.
With the color.
With the color, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Burns.
Board members, I also want to clarify, when I said that any decision can be appealed, that wasn't me saying that you should vote yes or no. A yes vote can be appealed, a no vote can be appealed. In this, in this context, just like in the quasi judicial context, a yes vote can be appealed, a no vote can be appealed.
Litigation can still happen.
That's right.
Yes. All right.
Can I just, with this, so what we're, this little handout here is basically saying, do we believe this application is consistent with the Town of Montreat comprehensive plan? Does that kind of boil it down?
Yes, and then I think, and just for the people assembled, we're looking at potential motions. So, it would be, we would add in, in the manner that it's consistent or not consistent.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, this is not the, that's not the version I sent over this morning.
This morning?
Yeah, the, this...
Ignore that, too.
It has...
Is this the one you sort of hear? Sample motions or, I mean, there are all these for the sample motions for that consistency statement.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll wait for a moment. Is it possible we can have a five-minute break?
Yes.
Not till we're done.
We need to do a motion.
The chair, I think, could call a break.
Okay, let's call a five-minute break.
Thank you.
So, we might get a call back. I'll bring back...